Well, good morning and welcome to the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. We're delighted that you can be here with us today. It's October 25th and this is our formal meeting. And we would be honored if we could invite Maria, I'm sorry about the Gastelum?
Gastelum.
Wonderful. We'd like to invite her to come forward. She's a chaplain for the Military Women across the Nation, Salt River Unit Number 155. She'll lead us in invocation. In the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd invite you to all please stand. Thank you.
If you would like to bow and close your eyes, that's fine. Dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful for another day of life. We humbly approach your throne room and ask that you please forgive us if we have offended you or anyone. Please continue to have your grace upon our lives. You have given us many gifts and talents and we are grateful for them. In this world, you have called some into roles of leadership and given them wisdom to diligently go about managing the community affairs. In this leadership role, we include the Chairman and Vice Chairman of Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, and we include also the district leaders of each region. Please bless them and today's meeting as they care for the well-being and safety of this county's citizens in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Ready for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Maria, thank you and appreciate you starting us off in such a good way. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gates?
Here.
Supervisor Chukri?
Here.
Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Here.
And Chairman Barney?
Here.
Good morning.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Santiago, do I see our representative from Animal Care and Control?
Oh.
Well, all right. He may be out trying to muscle through a couple of restless pets, but we're sure that he's safe. All right, with that, we'll proceed with our statutory hearings and we have a number of items that are here for application. Special event license for Theater West, Southwest Wildlife Conservation Center, Reigning Grace Ranch, St. Catherine, Greek Orthodox Church, and Boys and Girls Club of Greater Scottsdale. Madam Clerk, is there anybody here to comment on items 5A through H?
I have none for those items, Mr. Chairman.
Great. The board will consider these items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve these items.
Second?
With that motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. For transportation, we'd like to set, we have a patent easement abandonment road file, PAB 0058. Is there anybody here on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Heidi Walter would like to speak to the board about this item.
Ms. Walter, please come forward.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. My comments are directed to Supervisor Hickman. I live in this area where this abandonment is being sought and I appreciate the process that the people are taking to go through it. However, our area has had a lot of easements deleted. The Parkway is blocked by the city of Peoria as far as people coming into Avenida del Sol. They can only come from the south and make a left on our street, Avenida del Sol. They can no longer take other avenues in there. And so now the east-west bound roads are being deleted, which is forcing the traffic down further into Avenida del Sol before anybody can make direction south or direction west. The dust is ridiculous. It's, we're just, we're forgotten. The MCSO won't deal with any of the issues there. They basically say, "It's not a road." Well, there's 300 vehicles a day that use that road, including the post office and the garbage trucks, you name it. So it's not that this one particular easement is going to alleviate the problems, but in that area, there, people are just putting up block fences, they're putting up barbed wire across fences. We've had buildings burned down because we've had no less than 15 emergency vehicles come all the way down to 105th Avenue and have to turn around because they couldn't figure out where the east-west traffic is supposed to go. It's just, it's gotten ridiculous. Like I say, MCSO, we have people pulling weapons on people, residents, because they're saying, "Well, you can't drive in front of my house on this street." We have people knock to the, it's just gotten out of hand. We're held hostage. We live in the back and we can't get out via 107th Avenue. So all of this traffic, I could say, about in the middle, we have one resident digging ditches in the road, people's vehicles are being damaged. MCSO just looks and says, "It's not a road."
Okay.
Thank you.
It's really gotten out of hand.
Mr. Chairman, can I call up Mitch for a second?
Yeah.
Because this is, you have not reached out to my office yet that I'm aware of. Have you, about some of these issues?
No.
Okay.
We've filed several complaints for code compliance in the area, but not specifically. We've been out of town for the other easement meetings.
Okay. Mitch?
Good morning.
Yes.
We hadn't heard anything about any objections or issues. I think the concern that she has is on the road itself. The abandonment that's being requested is actually on the east side of the property. So it doesn't really impact the roadway that is of her concern. Obviously, it's a vacant parcel currently, and so obviously, if additional homes are built there, then it would allow for more traffic, for people going and coming. But it doesn't really impact the road access to the other properties in the area.
Okay. You know, you're talking about just the general conditions and what's been, what's been going on in that area. And this is kind of a ministerial thing about one particular stretch. So I would probably like to continue to move this forward, this, this one item. But I would like you to get in touch with, well, one second Mitch, I would like you to make sure you talk to my Chief of Staff, Scott Asham. Scott, could you put your hand up for a second? Because I'd like to learn a little bit more about it, okay? So, but go ahead Mitch. You have something else?
Well, I was gonna say, I can talk to her as well about the general conditions.
Would that, would that be okay by you?
We would love to be heard.
Okay, awesome. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, because it's such a small thing, but might lead to a bigger issue that we'll, we'll start ferreting out, I would move for approval on this patent easement. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for joining us today. Appreciate your, your voice. Do we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. For the constable, we have grant fund for Constable Ethics Standards and Training Board, and for the county attorney, accept funding for the Joint Terrorism Task Force, amend the agreement with Honor Health, grant for the Bureau of Justice Assistance and Official Appointments, and oath of office. The board will consider items 7 through 11.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. For the recorder, we have an IGA with the Arizona Secretary of State, and for the Sheriff's Department, accept funds for the county jail's education program, the administrative correction to license plate designation, two amendments to the sub-grantee agreements for the Arizona Homeland Security projects, and exemption for markings and issuance of undercover license plates. Board will consider items 12 through 17.
So moved. Second with a comment?
Please.
On item number 12, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see the, this IGA with the Arizona Secretary of State with our Recorder's Office. I think, I think information has to travel between the counties and the state in all sorts of ways. So I'm glad that they're coming to this agreement to talk, just because it's, we're, we're here to make sure we pull off good elections. So I'm glad that they are talking, and with that, I approve.
Thank you. Yeah, it was actually initiated by the state in terms of bringing us into compliance on some issues, and so with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Continuing on with the items for the Sheriff's Department, IGA with the Tolleson Police Department, mashing donations for both cash and non-cash items, one-time additions to the Rico fleet, a permanent addition to the fleet, and sub-grantee agreements with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. For the treasurer, we have various purchase offers from the city of Chandler on tax-deed land parcels, with a big thank you to Reed, and a list of real property held by state, by the state, by tax deed. Questions or comments before the board considers items 18 through 27?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with a comment.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please Supervisor Chukri.
You know, it's, the governor appointed me to the Homeland Security Committee some years ago. I guess it's been about three or four years now, and, you know, we really have to compete for those dollars. And MCSO is very nice, they host the meetings at their facility, and it's exciting to see, I know throughout this agenda today, that we're really receiving great dollars that really help further the cause of protecting Maricopa County. So I just want to make sure that we all are recognizing that appreciation.
Well, thank you for your work and service there, and yeah, that's a good, good point to remember. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. For the Assistant County Manager, Ms. Mary Ellen Shepherd, appointment and resignation of members to the Workforce Development Board, and air quality, two amendments to agreements with the Maricopa County, the Maricopa Association of Governments and the City of Mesa, the Arizona State Diesel Program Grant, license agreement for air quality education kiosk, and permanent additions to the fleet. We have a request from Ms. Diane Barker to come forward and speak on item number 29. Welcome, Ms. Barker.
Good morning, Chairman Barney and Board of Supervisors. This is travel reduction, and I've said before, we don't need to reduce trips, it's all about choice. Are you gonna do multi-modal and choose to ride with somebody, or use transit, or walk or bicycle? It's about a third of the money that's coming to the Air Quality Department here at Maricopa County from MAG, and you're giving it to our PTA. I'm pretty regular about looking at the payments, and I see this, but I've never ever seen a synopsis of what they qualify as this money is going to reduce the trips, or, you know, add to, but how it affects the air quality. And that's the basis of this money. So, you know, I'd like to see the results of this money that we're giving to our PTA and what they're doing. I've mentioned it to my supervisor, we need to up the image of the average rider of transit. It's not all about these bad people that are on there, that are sleeping on there and staying on there all day. And it takes a little kindness to ask somebody to stop smoking on a platform, rather than sending a security guard to kick them off.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. All right, I just received a note from the clerk here that the Air Quality Department has asked that we withdraw item 30 from the agenda, so the chair will entertain a motion for approval on items 28 through 33, excluding item 30.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. For Animal Care and Control, we have a number of New Hope agreements. We have an agreement with Lance Staffco, Papa John's Pizza, and the acceptance of donations, grant agreement with the Petsmart Charities, Inc., and for emergency management, grant funds for the emergency plans, software and satellite connectivity, and grant funds from the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. The board will consider items 34 through 59.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number 34 through 59, and a big thank you to Petsmart for once again on number item 56.
Thanks to Petsmart, now, do we have a second?
And I would second, and also say a big thanks on item 53 to Papa John's Pizza, who will be running a discount program where 10% of the discounted pizza price, purchase price, will come back to Maricopa County Animal Care Control, which is wonderful. So we'll be ordering some Papa John's pizzas in the Kitz family.
Wonderful. Both great programs, we certainly appreciate all of the effort and work that goes into bringing awareness and resources into the county. These are just two great examples, so thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. For facilities management, agreement with APS for photovoltaic system, for finance funds, transfers and warrants, budget adjustment for the tribal gaming funds from the Gila River Indian Community, and accept tribal gaming funds from the Gila River Indian Community and Toto Orem Nation.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Human resources adjustment to market ranges for human services, amend IGAs and agreements with the city of Avondale, the Town of Gilbert, and Community Bridges, Inc., subordination agreement with Madison Heights Phase 1 and Phase 2 LLC, and rescind action and substitute NIGA with the city of Phoenix. The board will consider items 66 through 72.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. From the Budget Office, the acceptance of reimbursement funds, capital improvement, and one-time funding reconciliation, and the first quarter expenditure adjustments for the medical examiner, exception to special work assignment pay policy, and for Parks and Recreation, termination of commercial management concession agreements. This is just a, it looks like a cleanup, we've got a number of items in connection with that. Any questions or comments before the board entertains a motion, before the chair entertains a motion on items 73 through 101?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 73 to 101.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Continuing on with Parks and Recreation, amend an IGA with the Arizona State Parks, a cooperative agreement with White Tank Mountain Conservancy, and the donation of a vehicle for planning and development, release and terminate the Falcon View Development Agreement with Everest Bethany North LLC, and for procurement, community outreach, public involvement programs. Board will now consider items 102 through 106.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Continuing on with procurement, intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement, roadway construction stabilization and paving services, and term structural engineering services. All of this great stuff is in the agenda. If you really want to dig in, we hope you'll take the time. For public health, amendment IGAs and contracts with Dignity Health, Arizona Department of Economic Security, and the American Lung Association. Board will consider items 107 through 112.
Move to approve items 107 through 112, Mr. Chairman. Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Again, for public health here, we've got amendment to IGAs and contracts with the Arizona Department of Health Services and Arizona Multi-Housing Association, except and use of redeemable vouchers provided by the Arizona Department of Health Services, a contract with the Institute for Healthcare Improvement, a contract with Desert Mission, and an acceptable usage agreement with Honor Health. The board will consider items 113 through 119.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great, that motion carries. Public health has been busy, we just have just a few more items here. Data share agreement with Tuberculosis Studies Consortium, IGAs with the Buckeye Elementary School District and Arizona Department of Health Services, a lease agreement with Maricopa County Special Healthcare District, a purchase order to IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services, and student rotation training agreement. Board will consider items 120 through 125.
Motion to approve items 120 through 125?
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. For real est, excuse me, did I skip one here?
126?
Okay, okay. Sid Real Estate on there. Okay, for real estate, we have an amendment to license agreement with Eduardo Haramina, I think that's Ed the Hot Dogger, most affectionately known as. And city of Phoenix request to modify parking restrictions and sign petition, and signs petition. For transportation, we have amending an IGA with the city of El Mirage, irrigation easement for SRP, a couple of IGAs with the city of Surprise, and then a participating transportation research boards roundtable forum, and paid dues associated with that participation. We have Ms. Barker that would like to come and speak on item 126.
Thank you again, Chairman Barney and Board of Supervisors. I support this food beverage license extension at the southwest corner of First Avenue in Jefferson, and I can't say anything more about customer service. This man, Ed Harmonia, has served this area with, at one time he had 11 businesses downtown. The man is a senior and still working, and if you want like a healthy hot dog, I mean, he has vegetables that he can put on top too, but it's all at your request, every single, eyeball to eyeball, and giving you exactly what you want. That kind of customer service is something that is of the past, but he continues on. So yay, Ed the Hot Dogger, go get one right at the corner.
Thank you. That's a great endorsement.
Mr. Chairman?
We, we need a, do we have a motion and a second?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 126 and 132, and I would agree with our dear friend, Ed the Hot Dogger was there, and when I started, like in 1988, he was there, and he's still there at the same corner, so kudos to him. I move approval of those items. Second?
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, for transportation, road abatements, a portion of McKellips Road and a portion of Joe Maxx Road, easements, right-of-way and relocation assistance document, documents. And then for the Board of Supervisors, we have the reappointment of Stephen Beagle to the Self-Inured Risk Trust Fund Board, and our 2018 meeting schedule. Board will consider items 133 through 137.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, the board will consider items 138 through 139 separately. Let's start with the resolution for issuance of bonds for the benefit of Heritage Academy Levine and Heritage Academy Queen Creek. And before we look to the board, we'll invite Mr. Leonard Clont, excuse me, Clark? Sorry, Mr. Clark, I couldn't read that very well.
Thank you very much, members, and it's good to see you folks here. You've been hiding this whole time, right across from the city of Phoenix, so I should have known. Now I've found you. No, but don't worry. No, I, I know the, you know, just like our friends across the street usually vote conscientiously for the corporate charter schools, and I know that conscientiously you believe you're doing the right thing. And I'm gonna say honestly right here, if they had them when I was in high school, maybe I would have gone. But I just have reservations because I believe that there are a lot of loopholes right now in Arizona law, which allow corporate charter schools to do things financially that public, you know, school districts cannot do. Secondly, you know, philosophically, and this is why I respect your opinion, because we just have a different opinion on our philosophies here, we have many hundreds of parents and children and citizens volunteering to knock on doors for bond overrides, which is very hard to get the funding while, I mean, no offense, there are good people at charter schools, and good educators too, but they can just come to you like they do to the city council, and they can get, you know, hundreds of millions, in this case, what, 24 million, 34 million dollars? So, of tax-free, tax-free bonding. And then there are the other allegations right now, I just think there's some litigation going on with Heritage, I'm not sure if that's been settled in the federal district court yet. And then with Great Hearts Academy with LGBTQ children allegations, but nonetheless, I just, I'm nervous about this. We've already had a billion dollars approved for them at Phoenix City Council, so I know you will vote for them, and I respect your votes, not here to attack you, but I just think this is the, the wrong thing to do when our public schools are suffering. Thank you so much.
Mr. Clark, thank you for your words and your decorum. We'll now look for a, a motion to approve item 38?
138.
Excuse me, 138? This is for the Heritage Academy in Levine and Queen Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and make the motion. I'm very familiar with this school. I, I'm very familiar with some of the comments that have been made. You know, I put that aside, I would just hope that the IDA, I mean, I see it in Phoenix, Phoenix is very aggressively really investing in the charter schools, and, and that's their decision. But, I mean, there's so many other projects that we could look at when it comes to workforce development, economic developments, and stuff like that, that we can, we can focus, focus on. So I would hope that as we move forward with these two items, that we encourage our IDA to really think twice and seriously when we start looking at charter schools. And, you know, perhaps maybe this, the fundings could benefit the communities a little bit better. This school's already in existence, I believe they're just expanding it, but I would hope that as they move forward, the IDA, that they, and the IDA's doing great work, I'm not pointing my finger at the IDA, I just hope that they look at other items as well. But I make the motion, or go ahead and move forward.
Thank you for those comments. Do we have a second?
I'll second, and I would add, I certainly respect Supervisor Gallardo's comment. The one thing that I would say though, is that every time, and I was a part of a lot of these charter schools that we approved via the Phoenix IDA, is that every time that we do one of these deals, and the IDA does one of these deals, it then creates funds that can be used for various projects within the county that are of great benefit beyond just the charter schools. So I think that's important to keep in mind, and programs such as workforce development and many others. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Again, these aren't grant funds, these are, we're effectively acting as a statutory financing portal, that the revenue then annures to the benefit of the IDA to be used in other grant distribution formats. And so we certainly recognize that there's a lot of debate around school choice and charter schools and public schools, but I think it's, I think it's good that we can put this out there and make it available. I, I know, I know Jared Taylor, who is the proprietor at both of these schools, and he's an exceptional man that is very focused on educating the rising generation, and I hope that we can be excited about the work that, that's happening there and otherwise, while recognizing Mr. Clark's comments about, and concerns associated with what that, you know, how that's impacting other parts of the space. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great. I think we'll proceed now with item 139. I believe we need to excuse Mr. Gates.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Right. Mr. Gates, while you step off the dais, we would like to now put forward the vote on the bonds for Great Hearts of, Great Hearts for Arizona.
I don't know if you want to just speak?
Mr. Clark, do you want to speak again, or?
Thank you, I pretty much.
Great. Thank you. With that, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, with just a quick comment, because we did kind of gloss over it, just wanted to also point out how hard the IDA board works, and with Shelby and Greg, and the, and the good job that you guys are doing, looking for these opportunities and working with the community.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries, we'll invite Supervisor Gates back to the dais. For planning and development, we have the setting of hearings for planning and zoning cases, and we have for air quality, adopting incorporating federal standards and adopt proposed rescission of certain Maricopa County Air Pollution Control Regulation rules, the Board will consider item 143 through 142.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. On the consent agenda, we have a number of items this morning for the Clerk of the Board, Treasurer's Annual Collections and Delinquency Report, Civil Penalty Appeals, Cancellation of Elections and Appointments to Special Districts, Duplicate Warrants, Precinct Committee Men and Women, and Other Administrative Actions. Board will consider items, consent items 143 through 146, 156, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 143 through 156.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you both. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. For the, on the addendum this morning for the County Attorney, we have a conflict waiver request for Jennings, Strauss, and Salmon. We have a letter of intent with the State of Arizona, and we have a waiver of conflict of interest for Jones Day and the via, via Maricopa County and future matters, and a file for certiorari petition to the Supreme Court.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pull item A2 separately, and we move forward, at least for right now, with A1 and A3. I make that motion.
Pull it separately for discussion today?
Well, yeah, we'll vote later. I want, I want to be able to vote on A1 and A3, and then if we can move after that, move with A2.
There's a motion, we have a motion in a second for approval of items, addendum items A1 through A3 is published in the agenda, all in favor?
With the exception of A2, Mr. Chairman.
With the exception of A2, yeah, the motion is presented.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, items A1 and A3 pass, and now let's go to agenda item A2, letter of intent with the State of Arizona.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item A2. Second.
We have a motion in a second for approval of item A2, a letter of intent with the State of Arizona.
I think we have someone here to speak.
We do have a speaker comment here, we'll invite Mr. Salvador Reza to come forward, please. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, I mean, I haven't seen you since I've been here. Since the chair of Joe was making, giving us trouble.
You were arrested, huh?
Yeah. Anyways, the proposed letter of intent with the State of Arizona for that, that's kind of like a rehab, or they want to have offenders coming and getting re-treatment, we're not against treatment, we're for treatment. However, that area there is very impacted, they already have the mission rescue there, they're having trouble right now, they're on the Board of Appeals with the City of Phoenix, they're basically camping out there, you have people that are coming out of jails and going to those neighborhoods, you have 136 offenders, and you know, we even have a letter from Councilman Nowakowski basically opposing it. So I think before you sign that letter of intent, you should really consider that, because you're gonna have opposition from that community, and not only from the residents, but from the business community. The business community in there is very upset at what's going on right now. I've been talking to some of the business owners there, and they're not very happy with what's going on. As it is already, they've been, some of the car dealerships are losing cars already from stolen, stuff like that. So it's a very impacted area, it's an area that we worked with for a long time, we stopped a transition of waste, toxic waste there a few years ago in the 90s, and you know, it's again an environmental racism at its utmost, because we get most of the trash nobody else wants, that Deer Valley doesn't want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reza. Any additional questions or comments from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, and once again, I do support programs that are gonna help those that are coming out of our Department of Corrections to be able to, you know, get back into society and be productive citizens. I'm totally supportive of any program that's gonna reduce recidivism. This particular project though, and we had this discussion already, not happy with how it unfolded, but nonetheless, we've put that behind us. I do still have a lot of questions in terms of how it's going to be rolled out, a lot of questions on why this particular site was selected. I know that the Governor's Office has given me their rationale, and trying, in my opinion, trying to justify why that location, but I still have a lot of concerns. I feel that if this program is just, is such a great success right now, and is doing great things, why are we moving it? Why is it being relocated? Justifications such as transportation, I'm looking at that, justification that it's already kind of similar to some of the programs there, I disagree with that, we're talking apples and oranges. The fact is that this neighborhood faces tremendous challenges, they've been working real closely with Phoenix PD and some of the community leaders to really try to strain it up, try to get some of the criminal element out of the community, and I just feel that we're just compounding some of the challenges that they face right now. The fact is, you have people that are gonna be coming in and out of this facility, could just, I mean, I can just imagine some of the problems that could arise. I couldn't agree more with Salvador Reza. South Phoenix should not be the dumping ground, should not be the dumping grounds for any other, for any program that the rest of the community doesn't want. It seems, I mean, it seems that anytime there's a problem, they want to just stick it in South Phoenix, and that shouldn't be the case. When I was in the legislature, we had a discussion on sex offender clustering, and it was amazing, sex offender clustering was never an issue while it was in South Phoenix, it only became an issue when it was in North Phoenix, and now all of a sudden, we need legislative actions and so on. And I see, I see this as similar. I understand, this is just a letter of intent, I understand, there's a working group, I question the need for this particular letter of intent. The working group met yesterday, they didn't have a letter of intent, well, they were working yesterday, so I don't understand why we need it now. I think the language where we point out the Durango complex is not needed, I don't believe that there should be a statutory deadline of July or January 1. This is just typical state business, this is how they operate, they want to rush things through, they want to just get it completed, and worry about the unintended consequences and some of the problems later on. We'll deal with that next year, is what they always tell me at the Capitol. And that's not the way you govern, it's not the way you push out policy. You bring all the stakeholders together, and when I say stakeholders, I'm talking City of Phoenix, Phoenix PD, the Sheriff's Office, the neighborhoods, the churches, the schools, the businesses, you bring everyone together, and you hammer out all the different possible questions or scenarios, get everyone on the same page. The state doesn't operate that way. They want to do it quickly, they want to do it behind closed doors, they just want to slam it through with least resistance. And that type of process unfortunately seems like it's overflowing over here in the county, we shouldn't operate that way. I support the program, I think we need to look at it, I think we need to see what's the best location. I don't believe that location is the best location. You know, they keep giving me different rationales on why that location should be picked, it's like, it's like putting lipstick on a pig, at the end of the day, it's still a pig, and we gotta deal with some of the consequences should it be placed in that area. So I am gonna oppose this motion, I would hope that we slow this down, I would encourage the state to slow this down. I understand the politics, but if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Let's look at all sides, let's remove the Durango complex language, let's delete that January 1 date, and let's move together with an open discussion and dialogue, and make sure everyone is aware and everyone has say in it. But at this point, I can't support the letter of intent, I can't support moving forward, knowing that the school districts, I had a great discussion with folks at the school district yesterday, I know the community is gearing to be part of this discussion as well, because I know there are some questions and some concerns, but as we move forward, I would hope that those folks are brought to the table, and we slow this down. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right, and not try to do it real quickly with little input from the community, and I feel that's the direction we're going. So with that, I'm gonna oppose the motion for the letter of intent, I look forward to see how the working group moves forward, and see what happens. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank for the comments, but I will be opposing the motion.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo, Supervisor Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, today is our colleague Steve Gallardo's birthday.
That's true.
So I'm gonna be very nice in my comments, because it's not every day you turn 55.
But, you know, look, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Gallardo's coming from,
but here's the good news, the good news is, the tenure of this Board has never rubber-stamped any item that has come across this dais, and so I think that's the good news. What we all have endeavored to do as a body, every single one of us, is to say, how do we go back to the line of hugging the tree, what we see as making government operate at the speed of business? How can we become, how can Maricopa County become the Amazon of government? Is this an instance of that? Somewhat, in that we are being innovative and making sure that we all agree that recidivism, lowering the recidivism rates will help Maricopa County's jails. The question becomes, how do we do that? And what's the best vehicle to do that? Secondly, the Mosaic program, which is a drug rehabilitation program, in tandem with what the Governor's Office is suggesting, I think will be an ironclad way to get people back as productive citizens of our society and of Maricopa County. So what this item is today, and I respect Mr. Reza's comment as well, is that this is a step forward to continue the dialogue, and to make sure that Mr. Gallardo's concerns are addressed, and that of the communities. At the end of the day, we might agree on 80%, not 20. At the end of the day, this may not go in this specific location, which many are thinking it could, but I think as an arm of the state, we have a responsibility as a body to look at these things, and at least endeavor to see where the bouncing ball might take us. So that's why I'm supporting it, that's why I think it's a good idea, especially when it comes to recidivism, but I will tell my colleague that you're absolutely right, I think we need to hear all these concerns as we move forward in the working group, and that this is not gonna just be shoved through a rubber stamp.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, after learning about the program, you know, I have, definitely have some of the same concerns that my colleague Steve Gallardo has. I've reminded my colleagues that I walk the walk every day, our company Business employs 400 inmates every day, teaching them new skills and new jobs, to have an economic incentive and an economic base in which, when they come out of prison, they have a work ethic, and they have enough of an economic impact to themselves that they can start a new life. So for 21 years, this has been going on with the Arizona Correctional Industries, and I have been working with the Department of Corrections. We need to continue to look at these types of programs, in any way, shape, or form, that we can get to where people have an economic incentive to get back out into the workforce. We call it farming taxpayers. It's been working very well, in fact, something will be announced here shortly, in tandem with the Department of Corrections, where our company Business is trying to create housing in order for offenders, or just people with poor economics to be able to get back into the workforce. So as I understand it, this LOI shows the, shows the different governments that we are willing to talk, and we are willing to look at things. It does not signify that we are just gonna get rubber stamped, as Steve Chukri has mentioned. So with that, I'm very supportive in looking at how we can all work together as state, county governments, local governments, and try to get people back to work again, and that's a central part of this component of what we're talking about today.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, thank you, I would echo all the comments of my colleagues, and I certainly understand where Supervisor Gallardo's coming from, because reentry center is, there's one in my district, and obviously that, there's been a lot of controversy involving that, I think the state has worked to address a lot of that, but to me, in many ways, this is a dollar and cents issue, and if we can be successful in programs like Mosaic, be successful in the reentry center, that's going to mean we're gonna have less folks going through our jails and our prisons moving forward, which is going to be, from a dollars and cents perspective, very positive, more taxpayers, less people who continue to be recidivists, who continue to be incarcerated. So I think it's a good step to take a look at this, but we will all be looking at this letter of intent and the proposed partnership very closely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Chairman, just one brief comment, just as I listen to my colleagues give their remarks, and I appreciate the fact that there is a commitment that we're not gonna just rubber stamp whatever the state wants, but if I would ask that the state, and maybe even the study committee, look, if you ask any expert, they talk about these reentry programs, ask any expert, the ideal program is to have smaller communities throughout the county. You know, if you have a drug offender, you don't put them in a housing where there's, you know, 30 to 50 other drug offenders, you spread them out. If you have a sex offender, you don't put him in a housing complex with 100, you know, sex offenders all clustered together, you spread them out. That is the best concept and approach. If you look at any large metropolitan area, if they're looking at reentry programs, they don't cluster everyone together in one community, they spread them out, they give them the services they need, and hopefully they get on the right path. So I would hope that the state and our working group, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, let's look at some of the gold standards when it comes to approaching these issues, look at the best practices, clustering them all up together, any expert will tell you is a recipe for disaster, the same problems that Supervisor Gates has up in the north area of his district, the same problems are gonna come over to the Durango complex. So I hope as they move forward, they look at the best practices and not just cluster everyone together.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Steve. One thing I forgot to mention also, I know that there's already been some surface talks, in fact, one occurred yesterday with some of the groups involved, and I just wanted to thank Joy, and especially thank Reed Spalding for putting their hands up a little bit when, during the design phase, if this thing does get off the ground, I think that's good that the county will take a look at that, according, you know, to those same issues about proximity with other inmates. So thank you, thank you guys for that, but I will be asking, Joy, I'm always concerned about cost shifts, and I'm always concerned about what the state is paying for versus what the county is paying for, so hopefully as this progresses, or any types of planning progresses, if the county is out money, I'd like to know that assessment of what we are, what kind of financial participation we are being involved with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, thank you, and I would just echo those expressions frankly, when we were approached by the state, the first place we went was to our county manager and to Reed Spalding to say, is this something that we can even consider, and what are the opportunities? So I view this more as a, I think as Supervisor Chukri said, really an opportunity to explore. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, there's concerns or challenges, I'm grateful for the Governor's Office and their leadership, grateful for the Sheriff's Office, the Board, Board staff, there's a lot of people in this work group that are engaged to make sure that we make the right decisions, that we move forward at the right pace to deal with those issues, and I'm confident that we will. Ultimately, we're working towards the same goal, and that is, what do we do to give these individuals that are in the custody of the state a real second chance? I think that's kind of the mantra here, a real opportunity to succeed, because if we don't, they'll be back, and that has dramatic cost impacts to us and to the state, it has dramatic societal impacts to families and individuals. So I can, I think we can all agree that we're equally yoked and engaged in solving the problem, we just need to continue to march forward in a united way, and I think that's what this letter of intent does today. So thank you for those comments, we do have a motion in a second, Fran, you probably have those in the notes there, so at this time, we would, I would call for the vote on item A2, the letter of intent, approving or accepting the letter of intent with the State of Arizona.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, we'll move forward here on our agenda, we'll recess- Thank you. All right, we'll move forward here on our agenda. We'll recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Board of Deposits and approve the 2018 meeting schedule. The board will consider Item BD-1.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn as the Board of Deposits and recon, excuse me, convene as the Improvement District Board of Directors again to approve the 2018 meeting schedule. The board will now consider Item I-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn as the Improvement District Board of Directors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and consider Items F1 through F5, minutes, declare and sell excess parcels, budget adjustments for tribal gaming funds from the Hela River Indian Community, approval of the 2018 meeting schedule, easements, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors and consider Items L1 through L3, donations from Fountain Hills Friends of the Library, Chipotle Restaurants, and the monthly individual donation reports, the minutes, as well as approval of the 2018 meeting schedule. Board will consider Items L1 through L5.
Motion to approve with appreciation from these folks who are donating the money, Mr. Chairman.
Here, here. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors for, we have two items, the approval of the minutes and approval of the 2018 meeting schedule. Do we have a motion for these two items?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Items S1 and S2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and put on one more hat here as the Housing Authority of Maricopa County and consider the approval, approve the Board of Commissioners meeting minutes from the February through August 2017 meetings, resolution to approve the use of unrestricted net position funds, and the approval of the 2018 meeting schedule. The board will consider Items H1 through H3.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That motion carries. We'll adjourn as the Housing District of Maricopa County and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and see that we have a number of speaker slips here?
This one has handouts.
Okay.
Let me get to her.
Wonderful. That'd be great. Thank you, and I'll send Mr. Rais. So, Fran, you have one more. Oh, I have that. You have the one with the handouts.
No, it's Gina.
Great, okay. All right, why don't we start with Gina Swoboda? Excuse me if I mispronounce that. Thank you. Fran, the clerk does have some handouts she'll give to each of the supervisors. Welcome.
Good morning. Gina Swoboda, District 2. On July 25, 2017, Recorder Fontes notified all precinct committeemen that, quote, "The regular rules for pebble voters will now be applied to all voters," close quote. Consequently, Maricopa County now has a de facto mail-in procedure. All voters, all votes, including the ballots cast on Election Day at the polls, are treated as mail votes. As a result of those changes, we're out of compliance with several state and federal statutes. The first one is ARS 16544B, voters must enroll in the pebble. They must be given the opportunity to remove themselves from the pebble. ARS 16572C prohibits ballots from being taken from the polling place on Election Day. The new system has no control on it. We can't count the ballots that are leaving and coming back. ARS 16579A1A, also Proposition 105, 1998, requires proof of identity at the polling place. What we're using right now is signature verification only on the back end. This puts us out of compliance with the HAVA Act, USC 2901. That requires anyone registering using the federal form. They are statutorily ineligible for the pebble the first time they vote. They are required to come and show identification at the polls. For these reasons, we are requesting that the Board of Supervisors please issue a new memorandum of understanding with the county recorder to bring us back into compliance. We would like the ID at the polling place restored for the 2018 and 2020 elections. Thank you.
Wow, you did marvelous. This is very helpful. Thank you for the handout. It's a little scary up here. Thank you, and we know those that choose to afford to speak, it can be a little nerve-wracking, but we're delighted you're here. Okay, Mr. Jim O'Connor.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Jim O'Connor. I'm the elected president of a Republican club in the state of Arizona called the Arizona Republican Assembly. We have 333 dues paid members who are all precinct committeemen, and 96% of us are also state committeemen with the party. I'm here to express my absolute outrage at the county recorder, Adrian Fontes, for his appearance on September 26 at the Fountain Hills High School where he had a captivated class, the senior class. He was there for a noble purpose, to enroll them to vote. He, however, took advantage of that captive audience, and I will add, I suspect doing that at every high school that he will be speaking at throughout our county, and said the following. "The POTUS was elected by 12% of the country, when taking that, when taking into account the Electoral College." That was an inane comment. I was privileged to be one of our 11 electors and cast my vote for the President of the United States and the Vice President. 12%, I don't know where that's coming from. More importantly, I am more outraged with the following quote. "Without your participation, students, we see an ex-game show host who bankrupted casinos could be the POTUS. That's what we have as an executive." These are clearly partisan positions and not acceptable behavior for the elected county recorder. I appeal to the Board of Supervisors, the only control over this otherwise elected individual, to go to that intergovernment agency agreement dated 1994 that your predecessors vested in the recorder's office, the election's responsibility, and withdraw that and put it in more trustworthy hands. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Appreciate those comments. Mr. Rusnick, please come forward. Welcome. Mr. Rusnick, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is John Rusnick, citizen, veteran, taxpayer. I've got a picture here of what this, my property looks like next door to us. The city put this driveway in or had him put that driveway in. He done it three times, and he done it wrong three times. The code tells the way it's supposed to be done. Now, back here is the property that is nothing but dirt, all in here. This is not there, that is not there. Ms. Rich sent me, I'm going to give you the emails from her, she wanted to know what I would take to replace this. Well, I wanted them to make this dust roof. It's non-dust roof and let this free. I don't care, as long as they could come up in there and go in that garage and be dust roof. But isn't that something? This is dust roof. Back to the fence. This is not dust roof. That's 6,000 feet, and it says 3,000 feet. I have papers here. I want to give you, I would like your comment. I gave you some papers before. I wanted some to comment. I haven't got any comments, but here is all the information to that property, and nothing has been done by the city, by the county, or by the state. And there is a state ordinance speaking that this should be dust roof.
Thank you, Mr. Rusnick. Can you please pass those off?
Thank you.
Ms. Barker.
Well, thank you. Chairman Barney, Board of Supervisors, and I am thankful and happy to be here in front of you and listening to the others on public comment. I, it's good that they came prepared, and, you know, I always am interested in learning some things that, you know, you don't always get out of the newspaper. And I want to say to my Board of Supervisors, you get an A+ on my supervisor, Gallardo, for what you said about consensus, that was right on. I took a mediator class out of the Arizona Attorney General's Office, and that is something that even the attorney said they're going to have to relearn what they learned, is getting a meeting of minds. Most of my adult life and earning life, I was a real estate agent, and I was on commission, and that particular occupation is one, if you don't make a meeting of minds, you don't get paid. So, you know, what a tough teacher that is. So, I want to hand that to you, even if maybe your point didn't get totally, it didn't go on deaf ears, and I'd like to translate that into transportation. Several of you go to Maricopa Association of Government. I think that they have a big plate. They're expanding into Pinnell County. I'm a big supporter of moving people safely, efficiently, and rapidly. I don't see some of the plans that we have from the local Maricopa County and the state and dealing with the state, how they gel together, and so I'm coming to you to have an open mind for innovation and bringing more persons' private money into transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. We'll bring it back to the dais here. Ms. Rich, do you have anything that you'd like to share this morning? Supervisor Gates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got a busy week coming up next week. We're going to be kicking off 100 miles in 100 days on Maricopa County trails next Wednesday. It's November 3, November 1 at 6:30 a.m., so bright and early. We will be up at the, of course, Andy Kanasik Trailhead at Spears Ranch. We'll be kicking that off. Love to have people join us. Got some cooler weather coming up, so that should be a great day to kick off that effort. And then the next day, on Thursday, November 2, at 8 a.m., we'll be doing our monthly county coffee down in the southern part of my district. It'll be at Scotts Generations Deli, which has moved to 7th Street in Glendale, and we're going to have Bruce Liggett from Human Services joining us to talk about the county's efforts in those spaces. So, hopefully you can join us for both events. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Nothing from Supervisor Chukri. Supervisor Guyardo?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We kicked off the, our CSA Legislative Summit last night. I think most of us are headed over to the lunch later on this afternoon. It looks like it's going to be a while, impact, two days of talking about legislative issues, so I look forward to it, and then Happy Halloween for everyone else coming up.
Thank you. Supervisor Hickman?
Well, happy birthday, Steve.
Oh, thank you.
And a happy, happy birthday.
It's a heck of a way.
I was thinking it was 54. Maybe Steve was right at the 55.
No, it's Chukri that's 50.
Celebrating your birthday, as well as I'm celebrating my anniversary and having my wife come out to a CSA board meeting. She's just incredibly excited about it.
You know how to show a girl a good time.
Yeah, what I do for the county. I just wanted to take it, and with the chairman's support, I wanted to bring to the attention of the county something that occurred recently with a program that's very near and dear to my heart, which is the Clean Start program, and I wanted to just take a few minutes of time to call something out. Some of you might not aware, but the Clean, I'm just going to read some points about this program. Clean Start is an innovative smart justice project with participation of Human Services, adult probation, and the sheriff's office. Women with medium to high risk to recidivate, which we already talked about today, are referred by probation to the Human Services Smart Justice Employment Team. The women participate in a 12-week paid work experience, working in the sheriff's laundry and learning transferable employment skills and taking behavioral classes. After successful completion, the individuals are placed into jobs. Over the past 18 months, almost 160 individuals have participated. 67% of these ladies have successfully completed the program or have been employed. Preliminary data shows the program has been a success. Women get jobs and recidivism was reduced, and a quick point, our new sheriff, Penzone, Sheriff Paul Penzone, has been at least getting kind of active in this and understanding of the program and would like to support it. So, that's a very good thing. An incident occurred in June as one of the participants who was getting her performance review slumped over in her chair and was unconscious. Human Services and MCO staff immediately administered CPR and used a defibrillator prior to medics arriving. Phoenix Fire arrived and transported her to St. Joseph's Hospital. She was still unconscious, having suffered a heart attack and brain damage because of the lack of oxygen. The woman was placed on life support. County staff stayed at the hospital much of the night and comforted all the other Clean Start participants who witnessed this event. Staff kept in close contact with the hospital and family, and the woman regained consciousness two weeks later, and she actually walked out of the hospital. She's recovering physically but is still suffering from that serious event. So, I want to recognize at this part, four county employees who jumped into action during the traumatic event, two of them from Human Services and two from the sheriff's office. Amy Brown, who was with the Human Services Division, is no longer with the county, so she's not here today, but the good thing is she's now in law school. So, she's jumping off into a career that we couldn't support or support higher. I guess I can't. Sorry, sorry lawyers, but she, hopefully she'll be a good one.
As compared to the bad ones up here?
Yeah, as compared to the bad ones. Right. Jack and Dee Kosak is with us, Maria M. Reyes is with us, and Jason Rabaki is with us. Their incredible response shows teamwork, professionalism, and the ability to respond during a crisis effectively and compassionately. As a result, the staff were awarded the Heart Saver Award from the American Heart Association, and I just wanted to take a moment of time and thank them. We talk about little programs that we might be saving lives here. Well, truly, you guys did, and I wanted to celebrate that fact with the rest of the county for doing such a spectacular job, and I'm hoping the chairman might want to take a picture and our board would take a picture with them to thank them.
First off, how about a round of applause?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We would be honored if you'd take a picture. We're going to adjourn our meeting here in just one moment, and then we would invite you to come forward, and we would be delighted if you'd be willing to do that. Is there anything else from the dais this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I didn't say your birthday's on Tuesday or on Halloween, so happy birthday to you as well.
Also 55?
Yeah, exactly.
Plus or minus, right?
56.
Right, great, thank you.
I'm starting to become the youngest up here. It feels great.
All right, thank you all for being here today. This meeting is adjourned. We'll invite our honorees to come forward.
Awesome, thank you.